So that give us two point three. We're gonna have to look towards the jail, for example, for whatever we have there. And you're saying we can decide that in a week of course?
Possibility. I mean, these are by chance turn your request. Then we can decide who we're gonna spend it on, who we're not gonna spend it on. Then that would help council know how much we're gonna determine towards the jail, help their funding. Numbers and all that.
Get that figured.
Get that figured out. Then they can kind of come together in a joint meeting when we decide what we actually need and want inside the jail. Because there's, there's a lot of things that you're gonna need to go to outweigh your wants. Because you gotta buy your regulations and all that. I think we can, I think we can get this done by the end of April. I really do. If not, we need to, because we drove it out long enough, this and that. We need to take the bull by the horns and throw them to the ground and move on.
Anything else?
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
So we can decide on a anything kind of.
I think we can decide it on after the next meeting. That'll have more information towards than we can decide.
Decide off the course?
Yeah.
We're gonna have work sessions?
Do we have, we have to get numbers on? I mean, it'll probably be the seventh or eight maybe.
A week before you're headed out.
Okay.
So he's gonna get you the information by the 11th to go to the CCRD.
Yes. I still have problems with the whole process. I think I think it's getting clearer. But I don't wanna get to early winter when we have all the plans done and everything and we go to bidding and then here we are shut out again. I wanna be able to put it all together. I, I am still very much of the opinion that it would be best for Elavos and the best for Carroll County if we split ways. I really feel that way. If we just quietly leave each in our own way. Because our councils are very thorough studies. And we asked for all in price of sixteen five and sixteen million five alert, and we didn't come close to that. We had an opinion on the existing jail and didn't ever really get one other than that's not worth an opinion. I remember back to when Steve inquired about a basement under this. Which at first I thought he was talking about under the jail, under the cell part. But the more I thought about it, why you talk about, you know, that'd be heck of a good idea. I think it's from underneath there. Because that's the cheapest square footage you ever get. Right now, I think it's seventy-five, eighty dollars a square foot basement. And the only response we got was not from Greg, but it's from the other gentleman there. Was, we're not, I remember exactly the words, we're not building a basement. At the time, I'm like, wait a minute. That's our decision. Not the architect's decision. We're not building a basement. I just, I didn't see the cooperation going on there. I remember Tracy asked when, when we were visiting a jail. Warren and I, Tracy and I, for your go wells up there. Visiting a jail if they build it, where was that? Decatur.
Or Decatur, Adams County.
Huh?
Adams County.
Adams County. I always forget that.
Sorry.
You asked basically what's right here in this plan right now. Okay, we, we see the cells, we see that this is all good. But do we have to have all this administrative space? And Greg took us, did a very good job of taking us through that jail and he said, oh no, we can cut that out. But when we got our plans and everything, none of it was cut out. It was all here. All the expense for it. We went all through the bid process therefore and got nothing. We've asked for the price to be scaled back at least twice. And it took to the second or third time before it came out with, well, let's go with a steel pre-engineered building. Which I really believe if we'd have done that in the first place, like Steve asked for Chevy instead of Cadillac. I thought we'd have been awful close to getting it through for the sixteen five. Now we're in a situation where the sixteen five isn't gonna buy us nearly what it did in twenty. I, I just know I have to put it down on my level, which is if I my wife and I were looking for a new house. And the only thing the realtor kept bringing us was million dollar houses to look at. We could look at them all day and say, oh, this is nice, this is beautiful, this would be wonderful, but I can't afford a million dollar house. So why bother looking at these things? And the first thing I'd do in that situation is get a different realtor. We have not been delivered until this catch today possibly, and I'm not sure yet. The product that we asked for back in eighteen. And I'm disheartened by the idea that you know, the fool keeps doing the same thing over and over again and then expects a different outcome. And I'm worried that we're not gonna get a different outcome. We're gonna begin in here in the winter time. Say, now what with you guys, because we can't, what we've got designed won't, we can't build it. So I, I still firmly believe that the best solution is to separate ways with Elavos. And that's my opinion, not the board's. Yes, Chris?
And I respect that, but I also see it as there's no been any lead person.
There's no what?
There's not been any one lead person that has, that I have seen that has been directing them and then staying on top of it. To make sure what you want is done. Kind of like the highway director said last time. We need a lead person, whether it be one of you or whoever that stays on this and keeps it rolling. It's like you, you said things and then time went a month, two months, and we didn't hear anything about it. And was there someone constantly meeting with Elavos saying, no, we want this, no, we want that, no, we need this, no, we can't do that? So I find it kind of unfair that you put it all on Elavos.
Can I respond?
Oh, yeah, I'll, no problem. I guess I only agree with that in, in a modest way as far as, I think we need somebody to hold our hand and take us through this whole thing because we've never done anything like this before. This is clear out of my league. And I, I don't see that from a professional standpoint that, and I'm gonna give you time to think, that, that they have followed our requests at all at any point. So I, I don't see how they anyway, that's my opinion. Greg, go ahead.
Well, just personally though. When it bid.
You may have to turn it up a little bit so they can hear you back there. It might have worked without.
You know, when we, when we bid, finally bid, it, it was, you know, two and a half years, half two years after we started the process and and I, I don't, I don't know that, that time delay going along was, was our doing. I, I just don't know if that was the case. And I think it slightly went along, but if it was delayed over time not due to our we can get this done. Take that plan to be done in a few months. That's our normal process. So I, I, I don't think the timing is all, all on us. The existing jail, we did do a study and I mean, it's, it is not for what you need. There's, there's not a there's not a lot of extra site to, you can add on. But it's not it's not conducive to a good functioning jail of the newer design, you know. It's linear, linear setup and as far as the addition goes. We don't have any parking, it's houses right there. So the basement, I mean, we can't afford the jail we've got, we cannot have a basement. I mean, it's just, we can't have a basement. I wanna say you can't have it, but if you want a basement as opposed to the rest of the jail, we can give you a basement, but it's not in the it's not in the budget to do that. As far as the administrative area goes, it's probably compared to Adams County is probably five or six thousand square feet less in this design than what's in Adams County. So we didn't just do the same thing. We did, we did cut, because we could never, Adams County's fifty-four thousand square feet. This one's thirty, the original, it was built, was thirty-five thousand square feet. So there are apples and oranges as far as size of the building. And then I can't, I can't do anything about what inflation's doing, what the economy's doing, COVID, what happened with, you know, with supply chain and all the costs that have occurred there. It's just, it's industry wide, it's worse in corrections because of there's fewer players. So as far as manufacturers and stuff like that, contractors that do that work. It's supply and demand and unfortunately, it's, it's caught us wrong. I, you know, I would like, like to see the project through. I think that we've, we've got something that works for the county and if you wanna keep this on, that's, that's what we would like. I'm not gonna plead for my job, but just, just saying that I think, I think we've thank you.
I don't have anything personally opposed to you at all. I, I just I, when I leave this spot, I wanna know I've done the best I could possibly do with the people in Carroll County. And I don't think they're doing it right.
But there's a thing in there that none of us, I just thought of this, that we spent eight or nine months deciding what we would have built this.
You should build.
Right. We gotta hire Jack, you know, we went back and forth on their prices for state months on this, because, you know, we never, we never talked.
Time hasn't been on our side.
Yeah, time hasn't been on our side. We meet twice a month, we talk about it twice a month, and each time we never came to a conclusion on what's gonna happen.
They flipped back before I came in this last night. They had to come in, they had everything. I was pretty slighted.
Right.
And that's what we're talking about going with that.
Right.
So we're starting all over again.
To me, I, I think all of us as a whole hasn't done our job completely for the public. That's my opinion.
You're right.
All of us as a whole have not done our job for the public, keeping on top of this. COVID, I mean, we had issues with the contractor, which contractor worked on one of those. General contractor who's Manny Dolan. Now we're back into how we're gonna fund it. Then we're gonna have to do it again if we're gonna you know, if we fund it with the D, we don't have to worry about that middle guy. Because that person's gonna take it over. And they've done this before and that takes all the crap off of us. On how, and how we go to finance. I have no problems with Elavos. I would like to do and move forward. Then if they don't do their job like, you know, we're saying then we'll, then we will start. I, I just think we need to give them
If they do their job, I think they've asked some of them, I think they're asked to there's other factors here that's affected what they can do. And they're not the ones that have to pay for that, sure, the ones that have to pay for this, we do. But overall, as commissioner, I, I've lived at facilities co-serviced county for a long time. And currently we don't have that.
Where is it we don't have one?
That facility, it helps serve the in its capacity for a long time. It's not there. It's not there. It's our responsibility to provide that to the leaders of county, the council. And things have changed in the last few years. And it just was taken care of years back. One of those talks about so being dragged and pulling it on the line. But now you wanna do another committee and you want three or four people making decisions. And you just preemptively say anything. Because they're gonna present something and something's gonna be your last one. I'm gonna be having there's gonna be numbers on to, or gonna be accepted here. I'm not just here for them.
And there's, there's some money there that that Tobe has in his budget. You get what, two hundred thousand a year for pulling inmates out of county?
This year, we scaled back to a hundred and sixty thousand.
Well, if my figures are right, I just did at thirty-seven fifty, at fourteen we have out now. That's a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. We're pushing out to another facility. We can save ourselves if we just get this ball rolling.
And then figure three. And then what the other counties are gonna build up?
Numbers up.
So I don't see numbers going down.
So I think, I think we can do it. I think, I think we've got the right people in place. We just need them forward. I think everything behind us needs to be under the water, in the bridge, gone. And we move forward from there with what we've kind of talked about for next month.
So is that the consensus?
People don't want.
I don't think we've, I don't think we've been thorough enough. Get again, I mean, who's really in charge? As a sheriff.
In charge here. We like to have input from everybody. So we're not all the same things. And we'll never be able to say things completely. But we've got to settle on something.
I think we can get that settled after the fourth.
Bottom line is, you know, overall for the county, the future of the county.
I've always said the people put me here. I wanna make sure I do best for the people. I think you agree with the same. Same way in the council. I believe they, they're
And their job too.
Ethan?
Yeah. So we've now met four or five times with the council and the commissioners. I feel like we've given a number every, every meeting there on what the council says that we can afford to the county. Every time Elavos is in a meeting with us when we have a joint meeting. But yet every time they bring something back, it's still two, three million above what we say we can pay. At what point are they gonna be held accountable?
Starting next month.
I just, I just feel like every time we meet, we give them a price and yet they never come through on our price that we give them. So we're just gonna keep, in my opinion, kick them the can down the road to keep them.
Well, anyway, I feel like you can act a price to the dip. That's what you focus out of the last time. Just go ahead and see what's going on.
And that's what we did. You know, good deal. So.
Because we really don't know the final cost until it goes to bid. Then you're still gonna be off ten percent. Because right now, the material's probably twelve months out easily. This building, if we'd say we're gonna go to the building now and order it today, probably won't stay it for a year and a half. What do you reckon?
Well, I mean, depending on the manufacturer, there, some have gone down to six months, but it's, it's out of ways.
What brand of building, what, what are we talking about when we say a pre-engineered steel building? Who's an example of somebody we get it from?
They got one going up down here right now, the New Dollar Street. That's a, that's a prefab building.
Okay, who, who's building that?
That's not prefab. That's not prefab.
I love those. They're raining it on trailers, just putting it together.
It's not pre, it's, it's going up from the bottom up. It's not prefab to where they connect it together. It's, it's just a normal steel steel structure.
Well, yeah, you have the correct understanding of prefab.
Correct.
It's a pre-cut.
Prefab is when you bring it in, it's already made, they, they come connect the pieces like a puzzle and this, this is not that.
This would be a pre-engineered metal building.
What's that?
This would be a pre-engineered metal building.
Pre-engineered.
Like a Butler building.
Okay, that's what I was wanting to know. If that's the type of person that
I mean, there's hundreds of manufacturers of those. That's just all in place.
Packaged deal basically. Basically by package.
Right, so you get the, the rigid frames, you get the siding, roof, insulation.
The Walmart building was just, was a pre
Right.
It's attached together, it was already designed and pre-engineered prefab.
Good. Well, I think we've covered, we're ready to move on to the rest of the next part of the jet.
Yeah, we got none. We did eleven.
Good highway, Ken. Morning, Ken.
Good morning. I'd like to update you on the Ken Road, well, Water Street, ten hundred and seventy-five extension that I applied for. Indot has awarded Carroll County six million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred dollars.
How much, run that number here.
Six million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. And that's for the construction and construction phases. So we would still have to pay a hundred percent of the preliminary, preliminary engineering, which is design and the right-of-way construction, right-of-way engineering. So that's purchase on top of it.
On top of this? What would come out of that?
We would be a hundred percent of that, of the preliminary engineering and the right-of-way. And we'd have twenty percent of the construction, construction inspection. So our total would be almost three million dollars and the state's total would be six million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand.
And what do you think of what cost to do this whole thing?
This, this is for phase one, which is just north of Camden, up to State Route twenty-five. And the whole total cost was seven sorry, nine, nine point four million.
That is a bridge.
Inclusive bridge.
Yeah, where are we gonna get this money?
I can use part of it from, well, it's, it'll be spread out over a number of years. The construction is designed scheduled for two, two thousand twenty-seven. So we would start design next year. The design is about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars and I can see if I can pull some from what we normally get from our budget and I have to look at what else we can, we can do. Right-of-way, that's over a period of three years that we're purchasing right-of-way. And then after we get all that design and right-of-way can block, then we can start the design phase, which is in twenty twenty-seven. So we'd have to be saving money during those, put money aside for those years. Starting, starting your budget.
So the county's part gonna be free.
About three million dollars total. About three million dollars total.
Total, that's the complete project.
Yes.
Is there any grants or anything out there that would help assist with this?
Um, the grant we just got is the biggest one. So I can look and see what else is available, but it's mainly through Indot funding.
Well, I think for three million, this is a wonderful project for us. I think it really improved the county. And I hadn't thought about you saying it could be done over stages, because I just, we're at three mega dollars.
Yeah, no, it, it's, it'll be spread out starting next year, year twenty twenty probably twenty twenty-eight if we start construction this full year, twenty twenty-seven.
Like a three, that project could be divided into
Yeah, it's actually, yeah, it's actually three phases. You've got the engineering design. And then, then you purchase right-of-way, that'd be the second phase, and then you go to construction.
What's the second phase of?
Right-of-way.
Right-of-way, okay.
So, and then we have the purchase from adjacent landowners.
And they go in there, actually, they'll grow it out, they'll grow it all the way through.
Correct.
Okay, so on profile or on that.
So are we gonna go, are we gonna go at the end of seventy-five where, was it six fifty? Goes into Rockfield and move from there? Or are we gonna do the whole road?
No.
From Camden all the way to?
Next, next year, we'll be applying for another phase through Indot's funding. So right now
And this'll make it a state road?
We're going to request that they take it over. That's, that's part of going, building it to their standards. So we'll build it to Indot's current standards. And then at, at its completion, we'll see what they can the idea is for them to take it over.
Because I think you have to expand the existence north of Camden, Water Street.
Yeah, phase one starts right about five hundred, ten hundred and five hundred. It goes north to State Route twenty-five.
So right through Camden, it's gonna stay the same?
At, at this phase, phase two, when we apply for the next phase, it'll be State Route two, two eighteen up to where we start on the side of the base.
Because there's a lot of utility poles that need to be moved for it to be abandoned.
Like a lot of yards.
Well, there's only one house.
And there'll be, there'll be a difference, there'll be a different cross-section through Camden as opposed to
There's one house on the, well, it's not even a house anymore, it's just a garage. That's where Ringer's. When they tore the house down, it's just a garage now, so.
Ringer's house is torn down?
No. Well, the, the boy's house.
Oh, the boy's, David Ringer's house.
That's the application.
So that, that section will be pretty easy.
And they each have a copy of that.
Then, and it depends on how you're gonna go from, I think it's six hundred and fifty north, they think it was in Rockfield.
Yes.
So from there, you gotta determine how much of an angle you're gonna come over, or you wanna just take a straight down the hill.
Though the engineering will study, right now they've got two two alternates. One, starting further south, just south of five hundred fifty, or curves over to the east and then connects to seventy-five. And the other one is north of five fifty and then curves over. And those two came out of the study that was done back in two thousand four.
Okay. I have one question just from a general knowledge, not a specific second. First question is I should have looked this up in there. The bridge is existing there now. What do you see for it? I mean, are we, I mean, I know my point.
It'll still be a two lane, but it'll be a wider.
Okay, that's not where I'm going to though. If we did Okay, that's not where I'm going to though. If we did not do this project, would we have to be replacing that bridge before too long anyway?
Uh, I have to go back through our bridge study, but it's not, it's not been on the list.
It, it was updated probably about six years ago. They did a resurface to it and did some.
Yeah, I think it was built in the sixties.
Because it had a seat hole in the.
Yeah, and they normally have about a fifty-year life, so if it was built in the sixties, it should be coming up. But in our, it's not many of my near, near, near plans for a big size.
I was looking at thinking, if we're gonna spend, have to spend a million dollars or so on that bridge, we'd be better off to go with three million and do the whole thing. Than just working on a bridge, but maybe the bridge isn't an imminent situation. Second, second question. We don't own the right-of-way if that road goes down right now. So how does that work?
What, what they would do is from center line to edge of pavement, which includes the shoulder, they, they, what they call is repurchase, re-acquire.
Re-acquire.
And it's at a reduced rate, it's like fifty cents per square yard as opposed to the market rate of a property. So from that point on, whatever, why do you, why, why, they'll pay market weight, uh, per acre.
So I want to do that as a fair appraisal.
Yeah, fair appraisal.
Yeah.
Which is actually quite an appraisal job, really.
Yeah, no, we have to get two appraisals too. That's just like.
Well, being approved for six million certainly makes that more.
Uh, my, my next item is we've become aware that, uh, there, there are a lot of county roads that we maintain that are not on our, um, Indot inventory list. So I know last year we added a road that we didn't maintain or took into our, our inventory. I would like to have someone study the, and I'll get them a list. Right now, oh, I have a map and it's not a certain color. It's not in, on our inventory list. So I get paid for that. So if we can update our inventory to actually what we're maintaining, or determine who should be maintaining it.
Are these mostly around the lake?
Uh, majority of them are, yes.
Uh, so you're wanting to hire somebody to do this?
Correct.
You got an estimate on what it would cost?
I have not even started that yet. I do know that there's a couple consultants. BSF, BSNAF is one of them, they did.
If you come back with an estimate from a couple of them next week, then we can determine if it's in the budget or if we have to ask for more money.
I can.
Do you have any ideas mileage-wise? What's guessing?
Any idea? Estimation, well, maybe.
There's probably forty to fifty miles.
Okay.
Forty to fifty miles.
Definitely. A whole new that's those figures, but it's.
Yeah, I'm curious.
I have no idea.
No, I didn't either. I, I thought we were talking five or six.
Have you finalized your chip and seal yet?
We haven't done.
And I was hoping to get another list from people calling in from our roads. And the roads are just falling apart.
That's where I'm getting that with you. I know that the roads right now are not the greatest. I've got a gentleman that's been on me since I set up here, and I bet he's been on you too, between one hundred north and two hundred north on four hundred east. Like that one mile section of gravel. Cause I know he's called in, he says he's called in several times and they all he gets is the answering machine. And I told him, I said, when you get to consensus with the other two, I said, that will be chipping sealed in here. One mile. I think we can handle that.
And, and what I do is I look at the road compared to the other requests and I, uh, we have to do a rating system for our roads now. And I look at the rating for that road compared to the other, as long as it's within, I, I try to take the worst roads out of any.
Well, the issue is here, the other roads are starting to get deteriorated around it and everybody's using this gravel road more often now. And that's why I would like to see it on this here list of yours.
Some wash problems too, too, where it's got that pretty big stone running out of the field.
So I think we can eliminate a lot of problems if we spend for that one mile, cause it's actually one mile, it's like one hundred, two hundred north.
What do you think?
Uh, four hundred east. Between one hundred north and two hundred north. There's what, one, two, three. Maybe five or six houses on it. I know it's not a lot of houses, but I think we've eliminated a lot of.
He's gonna have to reach for four years on it.
Yep. And we did it not too long ago for a family that came in with only two, to have their road chipped and sealed, it was gravel outside four. It was a little over a mile, and we did it last year.
Is it gravel road now?
It was a gravel, yeah, it's gravel road now.
We have two that we have voted on already. One is down on the county line road, eight hundred south. There's a one-mile section there that we voted on.
Maybe that's the section I'm thinking about.
I don't know. Uh, because it's paved, not paved, paved.
Right.
It seemed like, why have that one mile not done? And then we also voted on one up here, uh, it's a mile east of Range Line Road. I don't remember, but it's where they're putting in the winery up there.
And I, and I've been keeping an eye on that. We, we've added millings to the road last year from the winery down to, I think it's seven hundred.
Yeah, that sounds correct.
And then we chipped and sealed in front of the winery itself.
That would very appreciate it, like to.
Yeah. I, I've been keeping an eye on construction. As they get closer, I'll, I'll add that back into our chip and seal program to finish that off.
What we voted on was, I'm glad you got it ready, but what we voted on was to do it from seven hundred to the winery.
Right.
And I'd like to see that done.
I, I think all we did was the, the add the millings, so.
All you've done now is add the millings?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a base of millings.
So is that on your list, that road, that one?
It, it wasn't on the list I gave you earlier.
Yeah, I looked, uh, I haven't seen it, but I didn't.
Yeah, I've been keeping an eye on that. As, as they get closer to opening, I'll, I'll get that going.
So basically, what we're requesting, bringing us that new list, we want those three rings guaranteed on the, on the, on the list to be done.
I'd deal with that, yep. Eight hundred south.
By the winery?
No, that's, that's eight fifty.
What, south? Oh.
Yeah, it's down by Carmont, right?
No, but the winery is up north.
Okay.
It's in here somewhere.
Alright.
It's not eight fifty, there isn't eight fifty, which is down in here.
You're talking about the, a part of it, that's eight hundred south that paid.
That one section.
Yeah, that, that's off the eight hundred south between seventy-five and one hundred, I think.
I'll have to drive it. It's out here toward.
The winery is up north off the eight fifty and seven hundred. Yes.
So eight fifty.
Make a motion.
Between one hundred north and two hundred north, that's four hundred east that mile section. Then, um, the winery up there at eight hundred.
We already voted on that.
Yeah, we already voted on that. Well, he has to determine the one on eight hundred south.
I, we voted on by the numbers already, but I, I don't remember what that was.
Yeah, that, that was supposed to be done last year, but they weren't ready for it, so.
The winery is off the range line.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
The winery is off the range line on eight hundred fifty.
Well, it's mile east of Range Line.
So we don't have another.
Oh, I can find.
Between seven hundred and.
So my motion means that we're gonna discuss it today, someday.
How many houses are on that road?
Um, four or five, but it's a high-traffic area for some reason. I think it's.
The other one is eight hundred south. So I just wanna put that in, you know, I should.
You made a motion, right?
Yes.
You wanna second it for? That's right.
Four hundred east. We have two on, two on the north side. Three on the east, west side, then there's one on the west side and one on the east side. I think there's one at the very end of it. It's been lost over and over.
Okay, so that's on eight hundred west. The other one was eight hundred south. By seventy-five and one.
There's four hundred east. Uh, you're, you're too far north.
In between one hundred north and two hundred north.
Is it one hundred south?
Yes.
It is out, not north. That'd be my mistake. Cause they had, this is twelve ninety-two south, so it'll be one hundred south and two hundred.
I can see more traffic on that section than, than.
That's why you had that confused look. My apologies.
So what's the, correct? South?
Yeah, it'd be one hundred south and two hundred south on four hundred east. When I see State Road eighteen, I'm like, ooh, that's the wrong road. Yeah.
Oh, you're south of them.
Yeah. And my apologies.
So then the other one is one mile east of the range line by the winery, which would be seventy-two, seventy-two north, eight hundred west. Other one is eight hundred south, one mile from seventy-five and one hundred something.
That, that's already been done.
That's already been done.
Yeah, from seventy-five to one hundred east.
That one's already done.
So it's beyond that. So it's one hundred east towards State Route twenty-nine, that has, it's all red.
Well, well, I'll call you with the numbers. I'll drive.
And last year, when they were closed down, State Route twenty-six, a lot of traffic came up seventy-five and ran east-west on eight hundred south, which is all gravel road. And, and State Route twenty-six isn't done, so we'll be working on it again this year. So I can see.
In, in the interest of time, I'm gonna second.
One hundred east to State Route twenty-six.
My apologies.
So I've got a, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor of that, say aye. I think that's it, isn't it?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Sorry for the confusion.
Uh, Director Cameran Gates.
Oh, you missed one.
What? Who did I miss?
No, you did, I'm sorry.
You can go. I was pregnant.
Morning. You did take a forward. I'll try to keep mine to her. I know we're behind on time, so we're good. I have a couple things. The first one is, uh, another property that we're having issues with, Carroll County. It's not a new issue. We've had it uh, for several years now. Uh, through my office, trying to get this addressed, there's a conflict of interest with my attorney with this family, a separate case within that family, so she cannot represent very clearly. So reaching out to other, um, attorneys, there's actually been two or three that also have a conflict of interest, so. This property, I don't know if Beth can put this up there for me, but, um, this property is actually in the flood zone, so a couple months ago, when we had high water, to say I was worried would be an understatement because, uh, this, this property is, it's prone to flooding, and it's on the Custer Bend where they've had flooding. I think two thousand eight, most of the properties down there were underwater. I've sent letters, made contact with the gentleman several times, and gotten nowhere. He states that he was gonna make progress and then uh, it's a, there's a lot of disputes out there with the neighbors and for obvious reasons, there's a lot of nice homes right next to it. So at the end of the day, I, I need to see, and I don't know if, I can't get someone hired to, to get this resolved. I wanted to see if I could get some help or direction from commissioners because, um, our attorney cannot represent us, so. This, this has been going on for five or six years, so.
Is that where you come in?
Not necessarily. I mean, I can't, what, what is the issue?
Nuisance problem. It's a, it's, there are several. There's, uh, vehicles, there's tractors, trash, debris. So it, the main thing is a nuisance property. Um, and I've asked him to clean it up and had several conversations, letters have went out and no progress. Actually, went out there a couple weeks ago when we had the flooding and it's worse. So there, and he has a couple properties that it's happened on, so it, it's a matter of, it's gonna have to go to court. And I can't do that with my office because there's conflict of interest, so I, I have to figure out what representation I can get to get this resolved because the, the neighbors are up in arms and I don't blame them. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous, to be honest with you.
Can you tell us where this is?
Custer Bend, it's eleven seven four, uh, eleven seven four five is Custer Bend. And you can see, can you put that one, please? It's, I mean, it's right smack dab in the flood zone. So if we get high water, everything that's on that property, everybody downstream, you know, there's a chance that they get lawn mowers or I don't know, on their property or goes to their property. And I've reached out and tried everything, so he's been non-compliant. I don't know what other direction to go since my attorney cannot even, um, she can't do anything with it at all.
Do you have any ties with, since the water flows towards Davenport County, any ties with their area plan down there with their attorney?
Uh, no, I don't, I haven't reached out to them because it's, it's Carroll County, so I wouldn't say.
If it does flood, it's not only gonna stay with us, it's gonna flood in the next county.
Right, but I, I wanted to stay with it in Carroll County if possible because our attorney represent a lot of things in Carroll County, so. Whatever option we have, I just, I think it's time that the, the neighbors of this, they have a right to look out their windows and see if they cleaned up property because it's not getting any better. So they've actually contacted, every time I go out there to do site visits, they, they chase me down the golf carts and ask where it's at. So, you know, it's not that we're not making efforts, it's a matter of conflict of interest between attorneys, so, and this is one of many.
Right.
So that being said, my next plea to you is Carroll County is in desperate need of a physician, that that is all this they do. The county has several properties that, and, and I'm not here to tell people how to live their life. And I've said this in past meetings, but when I look out my window, I have a right to see it. Uh, I have a right for my property value not to be brought down because my neighbors wanna turn ours into a junkyard or leave trash out their yard or, you know, decrease their property value. Dealt by implemented the code enforcement, uh, they're doing, they're doing away the word, they're not out, just, they're, they're getting properties cleaned up. It's a step-by-step process, there's a lot to it. I can't do it. I don't have the manpower. There's, if you do it step by step, do notices, uh, in code, it can be done correctly. And most of the time they get results. We have the nuisance ordinance. We don't have the staff in the health department for that. Our office can do the junkyard department, which I tie in with the sheriff's department. They've done a great job of helping me with that. It, it takes a lot to get these cleaned up. Uh, my office can't do it. I, I don't feel, uh, it's fair to the people that wanna comply with the rules, that are taking so much time away from them by going out visiting these properties, chasing these people down, sending them letters, and at the end, there's no progress. So it, it's not fair to the people. I don't know, the, we can implement a position, that's all they did, I know budgets are tight, we just talked about twenty million dollar jail, but something has to be done, we've been going around in circles for years and years and years with several of these properties, and we're, we're losing people to the county, because, so comes up to the house and say, well, I don't wanna live like that, so, so, it's been a ongoing problem, the top set up here, and it's just getting worse, yeah, it, I have a problem.
They got here better since you've been in the office down here, because I know you go after, because a lot of them has been cleaned up.
I, I just got a, uh, call this morning about someone living in a camper, another camper, not the, the one I have down here, so they're moving into Carroll County, they're putting a camper down, and, you know, I have to pay property tax, you have to pay property tax, so it's not fair to the people that try to do things right, go through the process, uh, so that could also be implemented as a position, I'm watching out for that, we have camper house, we have resorts for that, so it's an ongoing issue, it's getting worse by the day, and our office takes a lot of phone calls.
We don't even have a job description or anything like that, do we, that, and inspector? You might wanna start writing one up, and present it for next year's budget.
Should I?
Start with the, uh, should I go through the company, or not?
Well, yeah. Well, if you have ideas, it has to go before them, before anybody to do anything.
So I think we need to take steps, get it going, get the job description going, then we can get it presented to us, and the council, get it presented, then see if, if any fine tuning needs to be done, then you can try to put it in your budget, and see if we can get it approved, that's the tricky part, because I don't know how we're gonna get to our, our budgets, is what it is. Cause it'll be under your office, you'll just make a position under your office.
That'd be my suggestion. Because someone will have to available supervisor, and, and that's where it gets tricky, because right now I'm doing area plan, flood plan administrator, trying to keep up with both of those, which, I'm not saying it's impossible, but this position incorporates the health department, with the trash and all that, the sheriff's department, so, well, if we do murder, we might get an inspector from.
Isn't in your budget before, that you tried to get one?
Yeah, I think Doug might have presented this to, it's either Doug or Dale, uh, years ago, trying to get this, it wasn't Dale, Doug did this, um.
So we might have something on file.
Yeah, I looked, I've seen where Doug approached the, the commissioner, but I, I'll dig into it more, I just wanted to get your, I wanted to put it in front of you, and this is not the first time that, uh, it's a big issue. I agree, we have, we have a neat county, and it's a shame that people tend to look at houses in Carroll County, and it is a messy, so, with that being said, um, so I didn't know Ted could help us with our situation with the, with this current.
That's your suggestion, Ted, on that.
Obviously, we would transfer funds for the representation, but we just need to find.
Well, I don't know, we might be part of this contract, since it's a nuisance problem.
Well.
Right, that's why, that's why I'm asking.
My contract, the health department is, that's my statute, that if it's, if the health issue, and if the statute says the board, attorney representing the board commission, attorney, that's not true of area plan, uh, I mean, I can do it, I, I mean, you can do, do an engagement, you can do, do it separately, I, uh, I don't wanna take too much time, I, I need to know more about the facts here.
Yes.
I, you keep talking about the flood plane, that's not, that's not a nuisance.
The property is located, that's, that's what I meant by that.
Yeah, so it's, that's not a problem.
Well, the problem is, it's located in the flood plain where the water does come up, now all the junk and debris that's in the yard is now going downstream.
Are the vehicles licensed?
There's one camper, and it's not, but the rest of it's lawnmowers, and it, it looks like a secondhand truck.
Have there been any letters sent on it?
Yes, yes, there has, yeah, there've been, uh, multiple communications, he's actually come in my office, he's, uh, my attorney has reached out to him, uh, and, you know, just let her know that I've been trying to, that she can't go any further, she can't take it to court, she can't, uh, because of that, so basically, she's dropped completely off, so, my point is, I just wanna see, if I can't get help from, uh, Ted, that's fine, I just need to see if I need to go a different direction, so.
I mean, if you want me to, I mean, it's a separate engagement, it's on the office.
You don't have to pay the board anyway, if you get another attorney.
Sure.
And I understand, and I've, I've talked about how we do that, so that's, that's something, I, I'd rather keep within a county attorney than, uh, go outside to a different office where we might have to get a contractor, we might have to, so if it's not feasible, I would. She works with me.
Well, what we're.
It's Rose and, yeah.